I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. And we have roll call.
Mayor Protam Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
And Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Oh, is he? He is right there.
Just in time.
Just in time for roll call. Are you here Rory?
Yeah, I'm here ma'am. Sorry for the delay. I had to update Zoom. Good to see everyone.
That ends roll call.
Okay. All right. So next on our agenda is the City Manager's Report.
Good evening. Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members. For the record, Stephen Clifton, Acting City Manager. The first item I'd like to highlight relates to a Ballenger Park-Hall Creek Restoration Project that is tentatively scheduled for May 31st. It's being coordinated by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and so you can expect an invitation that'll be coming your way. The next item, Ricky is trying to coordinate with Primera and inviting the council members to take a tour of their campus and their recent redevelopment projects. And so you can expect Ricky to coordinate with you on some available dates. Okay, the next item, this relates to a ribbon cutting for BW Noodle Company, and that is scheduled for April 15th at 1:00 p.m. The address is 232-02-57th Avenue West. And again, that's at 1:00 p.m. Okay. Ricky has been trying to coordinate some professional photo shoots for your group photo and individual headshots for the website. And May 1st did not work, and so she has been reaching out. And two available dates are May 15th and May 30th. So far, Councilmember Wall, Councilmember, or Mayor Matsumoto Wright, and Councilmember Ryan can all make it on the 15th and the 30th. And so if you could let me know either at the end of this meeting, or maybe even right now, which days will work, and I can get that back to Ricky. Both? Okay. Councilmember Sonmore? Yeah, I'll go to Councilmember Murray.
The 15th is good. The 30th is doable.
The 30th is, is doable?
That's a Friday. That's, yeah.
Okay.
No, I don't think, is it?
Am I looking at the right?
No, it's like Monday or the holiday after the holiday.
I'm looking at, sorry.
Sorry. Yeah, let me get my calendar. May 30th is a Tuesday. May 15th is a Monday. Okay, let's go to Councilmember.
Both of those work for me.
Payne Donovan. They do. Okay. Great. Okay. Okay, great. So it looks like, at least for now, unless we hear otherwise, both dates work for everybody. Okay. Lastly, the opioid settlement agreement, which I mentioned last time. I have signed on to the five agreements and the overall agreement as well. And I received notification from the Implementation Administrator that everything was appropriately filled and signed. At this time, we don't know how much money we're going to get. We imagine it'll be proportional to the overall settlement amount. For example, the first round was 500 million plus for the state of Washington. We got 33,000. This is over 400 million, so I imagine it'll probably be under 30,000. Okay. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. So next on our agenda is the introduction. Sorry. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the introduction of the new events coordinator, and that he's going to be introduced by Jeff Betts. There you are.
Hey, good evening. Mayor, Mayor Protam, and council members. I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation and Parks Director for the city. And yes, thank you, I am on Zoom today. So I am going to introduce Andrew Appelwick, who has now seated himself at the table. So Andrew has previously was an employee also for Recreation and Parks. If you remember, when you come into Recreation of the Pavilion, you probably saw him quite frequently, sitting up front, or helping people, or out back also, in the back office back there doing some administrative work. And he has done a great job for us for a few years since he's been employed at the city. And he has a tremendous amount of events experience, from races to actually helped on our 3rd of July last year with all the vendors that we had. So he was a really good candidate and a great hire so far. He's been in this position for a few weeks, so he's still trying to figure out kind of what we, what we're doing and how to do it, and meeting lots of people around the community, but he's got a lot of really good ideas. So it will be a really, actually, a great opportunity for the city to have him in this position, and really start to try to develop some of those community relationships that we all want to see, and try to bring people together. So I'll let Andrew introduce himself, but have at it.
All right.
Welcome Andrew.
Thank you Jeff, and thank you council for having me here tonight. As Jeff said, my name's Andrew Appelwick. I've been working for the Recreation and Parks Department of Mount Lake Terrace for the last four years as a Support Service Coordinator. And moving into this role, I'm excited to be able to expand our event offerings, and really try to have a point person that people can go to when they have questions about events as a whole, or guidance for anything moving forward in the events category. Been in this position now for about four and a half weeks, and it's been a whirlwind for sure. Hitting the ground running, we have a lot going on with 3rd of July, National Night Out primarily my focus is right now. Also lining up, getting our employee breakfast back on track, and the tree lighting in December. National Night Out is coming along really well. A lot of vendors, a lot of interest, people coming back, a lot of support here throughout the city, to be able to have our safety crews, our fire department, police department, and other departments available for us. Was able to meet with the chamber two weeks ago to introduce myself as well, and kind of give them insight to what we're doing here, and kind of just make sure that they have an established connection with me moving forward for any events that they're looking at as well, to make sure we can bridge the community of businesses with us. 3rd of July is also going really well. We're actually looking to expand what we are offering there. It does impact a little bit with the Hall Creek Restoration, so it will look a little different this year. But we have expanded our food truck offerings this year to meet the needs that we ran into last year with every truck selling out. It's a great problem to have, but to be able to kind of accommodate for that and bring on a couple of new vendors. Everyone's returning from last year because they all wanted to be back, and so that's a huge success on our end from last year moving forward. And I'm excited to see what else we can get going in the city. And the businesses and business owners that I've talked to are really excited to have a point person they can kind of reach out to when they have questions as far as what's going on in community as well. Yeah.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions to ask him? Go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
Hey Jeff, while we have you in Zoom, can you announce the art sculpture event next Wednesday? I forgot to mention that as part of my City Manager Report.
Oh, yeah. So there's a community meeting Wednesday, so it would be actually a week from yesterday. And it'll be in the City Council chambers, and it, people can arrive around 5:30, I believe is what we announced. And artists will be there a little bit earlier to set up, but we have four artists that will present what they've created for the pedestrian plaza that's adjacent to Light Rail Station. And so really excited to see what they've came up with and what they're able to present. I think they all have some sort of digital presentation, and then also probably some sort of model to look at as well. So be very exciting. And that's in-person, City Council chambers next Wednesday.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that update Jeff as well. Welcome aboard, or I guess we would say welcome to a new position on the board perhaps. But nonetheless, great to have you here, and really more of a comment, which is to say, I think you probably know I work with Volunteers of America Western Washington. If you don't, you know now. And I've already mentioned you to our volunteer coordinator. She's been out, but I wanted to get the two of you together just in the sense of know who your resources are, and I'm not sure if you'll be helping with the Tour de Terrace or not, but we're already trying to see if we can drum up volunteers for that event. But I figured that might be a good connection for you as you start thinking through other events and getting our community engaged.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Actually, I am going to be, my role with Tour de Terrace this year is primarily focusing on volunteer and acquiring them, getting a schedule set up with Tour de Terrace to try to increase the amount of volunteers we have. And so I have received that information already, which is great. We are going to work together with launching a new volunteer interest form on our website, so people can go and select which boxes for the style of events, or parks cleanups, and other things that we offer throughout the year. And so they will be notified then directly through myself, or Ken, whoever's overseeing that event, that there's an opportunity coming out, so that they're not getting blasted for every event, but ones that they are really focused on and would like to actually be a part of. Tour de Terrace is on there, our parks cleanups are on there, general event, Green Team for our street cleanups. And so that'll be added to the volunteer page of the events as well. So, yeah.
Great. Anyone else? Councilmember Sonmore?
I just want to say it's great to see you in this position. I used to see you at the Pavilion all the time, and it's so nice to have you in this position, and I've heard a lot of good things. I didn't know all the volunteer experience that you already had, so welcome aboard, and we're very happy to have you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, or congratulations, I guess, on the new role. Very excited about the position, I think we all are, and very excited to see folks growing their careers within the city. That's very exciting. I did have, I think, one question, and I'll just, I'll put it out there, and I don't know if it's a question for you or a question for Jeff, but I think one of the areas we had talked about, kind of this role potentially doing some interfacing with is with some of our commissions. And I'm curious if that's a conversation that you guys have started to have, and if that's something we'll hear more about in the near future.
The answer's yes. My role with this, and I'm sure Jeff will chime in too, is I'm as a resource, to be able to kind of implement as needed with a scope and vision clearly proposed, and I can assist in that aspect of it, but not to necessarily plan or take over, because myself not knowing what the vision of that event would be, definitely needs to be worked on with the commission. Jeff?
Yeah, no, Andrew has already actually taken upon himself to meet with each one of the boards and commissions. I think he has DEIC scheduled for, is it this month, right? So tomorrow, no, next week, next Wednesday's meeting. So he, he has met with each board and commission and introduced himself, and I think that he's trying to get everybody thinking about what kind of events that we should be doing in the future. And one thing that I've kind of laid out with Andrew as far as his first, you know, go around, first year, was the way we think of it in event planning, is, is let's keep it simple this year, and really try to focus on the events that we do, the events that we manage primarily, and then assist Tour de Terrace. Tour de Terrace is the biggest actually single event in the city, but it's not, we're not the primary sponsor, we just assist them. But we, they, they really need some volunteers, so that's really what he's working on, and then also taking on that 3rd of July event, the National Night Out, the tree lighting event. And also, he's trying to work on a movie in the park event, which would be pretty easy to pull off and relatively cheap. So beyond that, we haven't planned anything beyond that, I should say.
I mean, that's a whole lot of exciting, just to say, I mean.
We really want to work towards what the community wants. Yeah.
Sorry Jeff, we had a little bit of a leg here, so I apologize that I cut you off, but very, very, very exciting, and a very, I mean, that's a huge body of work, and I think we're all just really excited about it. So congratulations. And then Jeff, I did have a quick question, as you mentioned, DEIC is meeting next week, and I think that, that coincides with the arts meeting. So I guess I wanted to just ask the question around, for folks that are not able to attend in person and/or, or attend for the full session, I guess, is there a way to provide feedback or learn more about the artists and the artwork that's presented next week?
Yeah, we were not doing a hybrid meeting. We did not plan to do that. We weren't, we didn't know exactly what the artists were going to propose, because some of what they could do could be virtual, some of it could be just, you know, something on a, on an easel or something as well. So, so we were planning just that in-person meeting. I think that as we move forward, and the Arts Commission as selection committee have actually had a chance to look at everything, that we could definitely bring all four of those artists' work to the public on maybe our website, or things like that, so we can definitely, I think, invite some input that way.
I think that's a great idea. Well, thank you, I appreciate it. And again, congratulations and welcome.
I think that Economic Alliance is having a chamber event at Diamond Knot on that same day.
Yes, it'll be at Diamond Knot from 4:00 to 6:00.
4:00 to 6:00, and this is 5:30, and, and I've got another item later that night. And DEIC is at 6:00? Oh goodness, that's really pushing a lot of things.
I know, right?
But that'd be, but at least we have the space for it now that we can do this. The back room, this room, we have a home. All right. Oh, go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yes, congratulations, really excited to have you onboard. And as you know, we have a lot of ideas, and looking forward to working with you, maybe getting together. Keep it simple, I realize, but let's start planning. And I look forward to getting together with you in the next few months, and start looking for opportunities of all the different things we can be working towards, and the goals we've set, and our, looking at our vision, our city, city vision and goals, and some things that we've kind of been tossing around and dreaming about for a little while, and looking forward to putting those into action. So look, again, congratulations, we'll look forward to seeing you soon.
Anyone else? Okay, well, welcome, and thank you very much for tonight. All right. So next on our agenda is the review of the general property tax annexation information. General property annexation information.
Right, hello everyone, and good evening. I'm Sarah Pizzo, Associate Planner, and I'm coming back to you with some more information about annexation generally. I know council had some questions after I came before you about a very specific property, so I just wanted to follow up with some progress on, on those questions. All right, so the first question that was asked was, are there any Snohomish County roads in the city of Mount Lake Terrace, sort of orphan roads? And the city is still researching this question with Snohomish County. It turned out to be a little bit more complicated than just looking at the map. So been digging up annexation documents and working with the county to compare these historical documents to really confirm ownership of these right-of-way segments. It's possible that they were left off in past annexations, so it's something that requires a little bit more digging, and we're working with the county to get down to the bottom of that. So that's the update on the first question I have for you. If there are any segments that are in the county, there is a pretty straightforward process, I'm told, to annex those into the city, so that's something we can explore once, once I have more information on that. The second question that was asked is, what is the current status of areas of potential annexation? So this is from our last comprehensive plan that kind of goes through the areas, and there was a question about the status. And I first want to note that Island or Area F is actually not currently within Mount Lake Terrace's urban growth boundary area. It's actually in the city of Lynnwood's, or it's in Lynnwood's growth boundary area. So that's actually not an option for the city of Mount Lake Terrace to annex, because we're only allowed to annex within our own urban growth boundary. So F is off the table, and Lynnwood has already annexed portions of that. But for a status update for A through E, there were actually two of the six parcels in Island A, or Area A, that had reached out to the city and submitted a petition to be annexed, but they actually withdrew their annexation in 2019. Turned out one of the homeowners was moving out of the area, or off that parcel, and got their septic system inspected, and it wasn't as bad as they expected it to be. So they, with that, and with moving, decided to withdraw. So there's actually no parcels that have been annexed since that information in the last comp plan, except Island C is in process, and that's what I was here talking about a little while ago. So that is the current status. And there are some common annexation methods for code cities, which Mount Lake Terrace is. I've kind of separated them into two categories. One initiated by city council, and two initiated by property owners and/or voters, which I think you're familiar with, with the petitioning. That's the process we're going through with, with that one parcel. But I'm going to focus on ways to annex initiated by city council, so since that's what you have the ability to take action on. So there's the election method. So essentially, city council would initiate a resolution, and there would be an election regarding annexing any of the remaining parcels. The next option would be annexation of unincorporated islands. So for the areas B, C, D, and E, there's a more abbreviated process to annex those that, again, is initiated by resolution, and would apply to those parcels. And then the alternative, unincorporated island inter-local agreement method. That is similar to the other process, but is a little less stringent. So only 60% of the boundaries have to be abutting Mount Lake Terrace, whereas the annexation of unincorporated islands requires 80%. So, but still, it's really only an option for B through E, because parcel A, I think, was just on the cusp, but didn't make that 60%. That could be examined further, like with a survey, if that was of interest. And then the last method, which unfortunately isn't on the slide, is the inter-local agreement method. And that involves negotiations between our legislative body, the counties, and any other special districts that are involved, which could come to an agreement about annexing any territory within our urban growth boundary. So those are kind of the options if council wanted to pursue annexing any of the remaining unincorporated areas. And I bring that up because the question three that came up was, should council take initiative to annex the rest of the, the areas within the urban growth boundary? And so those are methods, if you wanted to pursue that. Staff would bring up the following considerations when thinking about that question. So all of the remaining areas are currently zoned as single-family residential, and would likely be zoned that if they were incorporated. And the economic benefit of annexing parcels that are zoned with that land use is really minimal. So that is something to consider, because I think there was a question about economic benefit before. And the other consideration is that most, if not all, I think only the inter-local agreement is the only process where council could initiate annexation that doesn't require an election or referendum process. So depending on which method, but more likely than not, there will be an election or referendum. In the past, property owners have had mixed views on annexation, so it's hard to say, you know, that, you know, whether or not it would be successful for the annexations to go through the full process through city council initiation. So just wanted to raise those considerations for you all to think about as you think about this question. And then just want to point out that MRSC is a great resource, and they have a great document about annexing in Washington cities and towns, where I sourced a lot of information for this presentation. But if you want more in-depth info, you can always kind of dig into it there, but I'm happy to answer any questions, or try to, at this time.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Councilmember Sonmore?
Sarah, thank you very much for your report. It seems like we do this in-depth look about every 10 years or so, and I appreciate being updated on this, but one of my things, and I hope it's a reprieve for your department, but I kind of feel that you have enough to do at this time with everything going on and all the building at the last report that you gave us. So to me, this wouldn't be a high priority on my list of items to do, but I'm glad I have this information. I understand how many pieces of parcels we have left to annex. I know the one on 214th, they wanted to do it so bad, and then they pulled out, and, and we don't have that many left. And like you said, we usually wait for the homeowners to come to us most of the time. And like that last one, you would have done all that work, and then they decide not to, and then they sell their property, or I think they built on that property, I'm not sure. But, but at this time, this wouldn't be extremely high on my list of looking at additional work to give your department. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you for the feedback, or for your thoughts.
Anyone else, before I ask mine? Okay. I'm surprised we still have five left. I thought, at one point, I thought we're almost down to none, but I guess I was wrong. So if something happened on that property, and, because I have the police here too right now, I was going to ask, do they still, if they call 911 and they're in this, an unincorporated island, do we cover it? Not the, oh, we do. So we cover it anyways? And then they probably pay Mount Lake Terrace for the water? And sewer and all of that?
I think the water and sewer is, is part of the annexing. They would get that benefit. But in terms of services, like first responders, that's, that's covered. But I think water and sewer, the infrastructure, the city would provide after, after its annex.
Well, I, I feel the same way with Councilmember Sonmore, because you really do have enough to do right now. And, but eventually, I would love to see all of these disappear, and we just become one, and then we have, we're already giving them the services. So, one by one, they can come to us. Thank you. Councilmember Sonmore?
And that reminds me, I know a lot of people want the annex, so they can hook up to sewer if they, like you explained. Is the cost still $5,000 for them, or have we increased that at all? Because I know that was one of the deterrents, when they find out how much it is to hook up to something, they're like, oh, we don't want to do that right now.
Don't have the exact fees for hookup on, on me, but it is around that. I think it's like $4,000 to file a petition and go through the process. So I'm not sure if that's the number you're remembering, but I could certainly look up our fee schedule and, and let you know. Okay, thanks Chrissy.
So most folks are already hooked up to city water right now, and they do pay a little extra because they're not in the city. So there's a surcharge for that. What most people come to us to annex for is for sewer, because they're still on septic. So, but once they find out the cost associated. they find out the cost associated, just with annexation in general, it's not cheap. So folks typically are in a situation, one where they have a failing septic system. And the cost of actually replacing a septic system, most folks don't know, but it's a lot of money because you have to have the new alternative septic systems and you have to have a reserve area. So it's pretty costly. So that's what we usually have folks coming to us for. Like Sarah said, because everybody's residential, the only reason people will probably come forth for the city is one, they want to get on city sewer, or if there is a potential for increased development in the future, then I can see someone coming in and wanting to redevelop their parcel at some time. But other than that, that's kind of where we're at. But the system charges, I don't know the exact number right now, but it is more than $5,000. It's the cost of getting hooked up plus the system charges is not cheap. I just don't recall. There's different thresholds depending on capacity that people need. So.
Thanks. Oh, Rory Payne Donovan.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be brief and mostly to say thank you, Sarah, for looking into my arcane question about the orphaned roads. But it's interesting to see that we actually have them. But again, I'm not certain it's a priority overall, but we'll be curious to learn if there are issues to resolve with the county when that does come up. So thanks for your good research and it's nice to learn about this stuff.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next on the agenda is the review resolution to surplus equipment from Public Works. Oh, I see Jesse up there.
Good evening, Council. The Public Works Department is asking for you to declare a Greco thermal laser, which is a thermoplastic striping machine, as surplus. It's reached the end of its useful life. We'll put it up for auction once the Finance Director signs if you should approve of that. And we're asking for you to do it on the April 17 meeting.
On the consent calendar for April 17?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments, questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, just my own edification, let's presume we get a dollar for it. Where does that dollar go in terms of back into the budget?
That would go into what we're calling the Equipment Rental Fund, which is our fleet fund. That's what pays for all of our vehicles and equipment citywide.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other hands going up. We'll just have this on our consent calendar. All right. Thank you very much. Next is the review of the 2022 year-end Police Department report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim. For the record, Pete Cobb, Police Chief. I have to my right Commander Scott King and to my left Commander Mike Haynes. Thanks for inviting us for the 22-year-end report. This year's report reflects a significant increase in property crime. I think you'll find that very common throughout the region, primarily burglary, vehicle theft, and theft of catalytic converters. It's not unique to the region. This is a plague we've been stuck with for the entire state for the last couple of years. The report includes analysis of completed goals for the year as well as goals for 2023. Along with additional statistics, the report looks at demographics, staffing patterns, critical events, and technology as well. Lastly, there will be a case study involving a reckless endangerment situation, a high-risk search warrant highlighting the use of UAS drone technology to assist investigations. I might add that in the past year, we've, I think I've mentioned this before, have had numerous conversations with legislators about fixing some of the police reform issues that were created a couple of years ago. I'm glad to say that, almost without exception, we've come to some agreements with the legislators. And I, for one, am very satisfied with what they've done so far. The pursuit issue will be dealt with fairly well in the coming week. That leaves us with the Blake decision. We still need to figure out the plague of drugs in our communities, how to deal with that best, keeping addiction in mind and also keeping some of the public order issues in mind that we've dealt with the past couple of years. So more on that later. If we're having technical issues, it would be Commander King's fault, not mine. Okay, we'll start with the mission and vision statement. I keep that before just for consistency and context. Next. And we'll go over a bit of this. Our goals philosophy, we're talking about the President Obama's 2015, a few years ago. As I've said before, this is the best thing I've seen in 20 years. So I still maintain that it's relevant in today's world. Our goal philosophy is maintaining trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, training, education, officer wellness, and safety. Moving on to Admiral Rickover, he had some rules that he was willing to share with everyone. I'll go over those really briefly. But you must have a rising standard of quality over time, well beyond what is required for him in minimum standard. People running complex systems must be highly capable. Supervisors have to face bad news when it comes and takes problems to a level big, high enough to fix those problems. You have to have a healthy respect for the dangers and risks of your particular job. Training must be constant and rigorous. You must have a robust editing auditing process to assure that you are, that what you say you are doing, you're in fact doing. And the organization and the members must have the ability and willingness to learn from mistakes of the past. I'm not at all shy about stealing other people's ideas. So that, as you can tell, is not a very recent picture of me. I had a lot more hair that wasn't gray then. But we all age. That's kind of sort of what I still look like. Let's go over some of the 2022 goals that we've completed. One of our goals, provide a safe community for everyone. Utilize department resources effectively. As you will see later in the program, we've expanded the unmanned aerial vehicle program, the three new drones, three new pilots added to the program. It gives us time, distance, and shielding edge to officer safety, edge to public safety. One of the featured videos you see today is a use of the drone and a high-risk search warrant. We focus on community-oriented policing. We've refined the embedded social worker program, selected Officer O'Hagan to partner with a social worker, the cops and clergy program. We hold quarterly meetings and training. We work collaboratively with regional law enforcement partners, participate in the regional intelligence group, Target Zero, SWAT, SMART, which is the officer-involved use of force, high-level use of force investigators throughout the county. That's a model for what the state is trying to do at a much larger arena than this. Regional training group, I've assigned the detective to the US Marshals Task Force, Regional Violent Offender Task Force. That detective position was previously assigned to the Narcotics Task Force. We've incorporated education and long-term solutions into enforcement. Utilize code enforcement, animal control to maintain a clean and inviting environment. We've utilized the civil voluntary compliance process, and we've also had one judicial abatement in 2022. If you have some questions about how that went and what it looked like, we'll talk a bit about it later. One of our goals is to recruit and retain quality personnel, replacing retiring department members. I think I've mentioned before that I've probably hired more officers in the past couple of years than I've seen hired in the last 15. The old guard is retiring. And there's new blood coming in, which has its own set of issues, but it's also refreshing to see new faces and new ideas. Provided opportunity, new challenges for personnel, drone pilots, the e-bike program, detectives, SMART team. We've put people in all those capacities. Succession planning, Jeremy Perry and Megan Cheats were promoted to sergeant and Scott King, was promoted to commander in the past year or two. We've maintained auditing systems to ensure compliance, Spyder Tech, Commander Haynes will speak briefly about that, command review of critical incidents. That includes any pursuits, use of force, high-level complaints goes all the way to the chief. Accreditation, auditing, and compliance. Joey Worthen, my management analyst, manages our accreditation program, keeps us in line with proofs. Lexo Poll is a automated policy program. We have experts as easily as a speed dial on the phone to talk to about a variety of issues. Right now, we're looking at generating a policy for body worn cameras. That's one of the first places we turn to for model policies. We operate a comprehensive and robust in-service training program. I've tried to focus on finding candidates of different backgrounds and diverse communities. There's a lot of competition right now. There's a lot of money being thrown at the problem by large departments. But we're still very selective in who we choose. We're not lowering standards just because we don't get enough, as many applications we used to. And we've been somewhat successful in having diverse backgrounds in our new hires. One of our goals is to refine the use of crime analysis, maximizing effectiveness. New World, Leeds, Lynx, and Cellhawk, again, Commander Haynes will speak briefly about that. And the UAS drone program focuses on officer and public safety. One of the things that was brought up in the recent reform legislation is the use of time, distance, and shielding. We've certainly embraced that and put it into our training program. Next slide. Goals for 23. Provide a safe community for everyone, develop or continue to develop our drone program in an effort to leverage technology for the purpose of increasing safety for the community. The program utilizes unmanned aerial vehicles, provide time, distance, shielding, as I just mentioned. Focus on community-oriented policing and outreach. Continue to utilize the embedded social worker program. I've spoken briefly with the acting city manager about perhaps enlarging that program. We have our embedded social worker one day a week. She's on call the rest of the time. But I wouldn't mind having somebody five days a week. I think that's a good use of resources. We certainly prove that program to be very worthwhile. Continue to promote outreach like cops and clergy. Sergeant Porter manages that program. Then Sergeant King was the one that brought the program to us some time ago. The e-bike program to make community contacts. You'll see those folks out when the weather's nicer. As you might notice, it rains a lot around here, so riding bikes is not always practical. And when it is practical, we'll be doing it. Work collaboratively with regional law enforcement. Again, we talked about the US Marshals Violent Offender Task Force. It's a force multiplier when we're looking to someone, looking for someone actually nationwide that we're trying to find. They are the people to turn to. Coincidentally, if you remember, some years ago, there was a homicide in the city of Mount Lake Terrace. The victim's name was Dan Jess. It involved a group of zealots known as, I think, the Gatekeepers. They shot and killed a man in the south part of town in a trailer. The suspects were convicted. One of the individuals is doing time in California. They're releasing him. And they called and said, he has five years owed still to the city of Mount Lake Terrace and the state of Washington. Could you come get him? First people I called were US Marshals. And they said, well, absolutely, we'll take care of that for you. So right there, they saved us time and money and effort in going and getting this fellow and holding him accountable in the state of Washington. We're talking about events that happened over 20 years ago, but some people are still incarcerated for old crimes. Incorporated education and long-term solution strategies with law enforcement, utilize code enforcement, animal control to maintain a clean and inviting environment. Just goals are repeated from 2022. Going through recruiting, replacing retirement, retiring department members, again, that's from 2022. All of these are just leftovers from 22. We continue to maintain these goals. We probably will for the next 10 years. Be regional leaders, set an example for modern policing as it relates to community expectations, listen to the community, implement changes appropriate, update and modify policies, keep our training programs internal as much as possible, keep up with legislative mandates, foster a culture of partnership with the community, be as transparent as possible. You can't always be transparent about everything, but you can be transparent most of the time about most things. Recognize community support and trust is paramount success. And of course, fiscal responsibility is always a focus. I'm going to pass the ball to one of the commanders here.
All right, I'll take over. So technology overview. So this is a list of our updated technology. Couple highlights on this list. We have continued to upgrade our drone program and our vehicles were in 2022 updated with new radios and video systems. Chief Cobb mentioned the Spyder Tech platform. So what it does is when somebody calls 911, it sends out a text to them and gives them a survey to fill out for us. And Commander Haynes and I get daily emails from Spyder Tech with comments from the public and from our community members telling us how those calls went. And it allows us to make updates or make things better where we have the opportunity to. So staffing review, Chief Cobb also mentioned many retirements and people moving on. But with retirements and promotions and new hires, we've had several staffing changes. You can see in the middle, there's Jeremy Perry and Megan Cheats getting promoted or getting sworn in as sergeants. And this is a continuation of some of our staffing changes with some more pictures up there. And we've had so many staffing changes, I have another slide. Along with promotions, this year, we had Commander Pat Low, Code Enforcement Officer Rob Jenkins, Detective Pat Hatchell, Officer Tim Cron, and Sergeant Kevin Peggert all retire in 2022. So we've had a lot of filling in to do. This is our organizational chart. We currently have 25 commissioned officers, with those including the chief and the two commanders, K-9 and detectives. We have three vacancies right now. Soon to have four. Sergeant Burkett is going to retire in June. So we have some work to do there. This also includes our management analyst, which we have one of, two code enforcement officers, three records specialists, one evidence slash animal control officer, one domestic violence coordinator, and a police services specialist, which that used to be our cadet position. But we had two cadets, we put it into one, police services specialist, and we're expanding what they do to help us out a little bit more. And I'll talk more about some of the positions later on in the presentation.
Good evening. My name is Mike Haynes, and I supervise the Patrol Division. And I'm going to give you a brief overview of the highlights of the 2022 activity tonight. These graphs represent primary statistical categories for the Patrol Division. Much of the upward trend can be associated to COVID-19. Obviously, that influenced 2020 as everything kind of shut down. And as we re-acclimated to normal life, the statistics rose. Calls for service continued to trend upwards with about 1,800 more events in 2022 than 2021. Some of the graphs can be a little bit misleading, but if you focus on the numbers of the remaining categories, you'll see that they're pretty similar over the past three years, specifically like the arrests. Traffic education enforcement continues to be one of our top priorities in the Patrol Division. About one in six traffic stops resulted in an infraction being issued, which is reflective of our emphasis on education, more so than just enforcement. Continuing with the graphs, these represent some of the more common property crimes that we see regionally. The numbers stayed relatively constant over the last three years with the exceptions of vehicle thefts and catalytic converter thefts. Although the numbers have increased significantly in the past couple of years, this is a actual regional problem, more so than just a city of Mount Lake Terrace problem. We continue to work to combat this trend through proactive patrol and community education, focusing on areas that are hit the hardest. Assaults and domestic violence crimes remain relatively constant during the sample period. Interrupting the cycle of domestic violence is an area of emphasis for patrol. Working with investigations and our domestic violence coordinator, we provide a support system for victims with the goal to end the cycle of abuse. Narcotics, K-9. These are some pictures of some of the highlights over the last year of Officer Friesen and Harley. Beyond the narcotics aspect of the program, it's also Beyond the narcotics aspect of the program, it's also a key piece of our community outreach. This slide provides an overview of some of the training and some of the community events that they participated in during 2022. These photos represent the importance of the narcotics canine program. Narcotics are routinely associated with, um, crimes of violence and firearms. Program helps to reduce violent crime by locating and seizing these firearms.
All right, back to me. Commander Scott King, and I'm the commander of the command services, uh, division. So, uh, training requirements, uh, so each officer receives a minimum of 24 hours of training, which is a state mandated, state mandated. We have several in-house instructors to include firearms, defensive tactics, patrol tactics, crisis intervention, emergency driving, less lethal munitions and the BOLAP. So enhanced training, uh, we have several systems which we use for that. Uh, we have Lexi pole, we have a library of videos for training and we do shift briefing training. So here's a list of some of our training plan. All commissioned staff, uh, attended duty to interview training this year, which is a new state requirement. And this is an additional slide with more, uh, of our training plan. In 2022, uh, we developed a testing program and implemented, uh, a testing and training program for our drones in this, so it's a new, new thing. Our investigations unit, it consists of, uh, two detectives right now. We usually have three, but since we're down, uh, we're down to two detectives right now and a detective sergeant. And these are, this is a breakdown of what cases were assigned out to detectives and investigated in 2022. So I'm doing a case study for you guys. Uh, reckless, it's a reckless endangerment case where officers responded to a shots fired call. A resident in an apartment complex located a bullet hole in their wall and, uh, it's a shared wall with somebody else. When officers arrived, they confirmed there was a bullet hole and they actually located the bullet. Uh, an attempt was made to contact the suspect apartment, but no one was home. Um, this was confirmed by using our drones and as, uh, Chief caught talked about, we use time, distance and shielding with the drone, just did not get super close with the firearms thing. And the drone was able to go around a second story apartment and peer through the windows to make sure no one was inside. Uh, later the suspect was contact contacted at a local gas station. Um, he did have a firearm on him and he was in a kind of a drug induced psychosis, but did admit to firing the weapon and, uh, had told officers that he recently had just got his gun rights back. So he'd had them taken away and got them back and ended up in this situation. Uh, detectives showed up on scene, there wrote a search warrant and an extreme risk protection order. Uh, judge signed both of them and the warrants were served. Several guns were recovered from the apartment and seized. So this is a pictures of the inside of the apartment where the resident had noticed a bullet holes coming in. And on the far right, you can see where the bullet was actually located near the water heater. This is a picture of the suspect's apartment and suspicious hole up there. Obviously it looks like a bullet hole, so it just led more to us thinking that something wasn't right. So this is where the suspect was located and there's the firearm that he had on him. Uh, when officers had contacted him, he had, uh, admitted that he had accidentally shot around into the shared wall of the apartment. And the suspect told detectives he was in a haze, which turned out to be from his narcotics, narcotics use. So this is an example of what an extreme risk protection order looks like. And what this does is, is it allows us to go in and get all the guns from someone and they're not allowed to own any weapons for a certain period of time, depending on what the judge says. So this is, uh, some of the weapons that were found. There were 16 firearms that were seized in total from the apartment. Moving on, so, uh, animal control and evidence. Tammy Custer is our new animal control and officer and property technician. She responded to 338 animal control calls and processed 1,832 pieces of evidence in 2022. Daniel Singson is our, uh, domestic violence coordinator. She works with domestic violence victims and helps them get through their court cases. She also works closely with detectives, uh, with the domestic violence cases and will help them out with interviews, uh, which is great to have her involved in that. There were 425 domestic violence calls resulting in 176 domestic violence cases. Joey Worthen is our police management analyst. She works on the police department budget as well as, as our state accreditation and she makes sure that we're up to date with accreditation standards. Um, she also coordinates and, uh, purchasing and handles finance duties for the department. Our record specialist are Sarah Nelson, uh, Sherry Henderson and Sandy Newguard. They stay very busy processing reports, pistol transfer, transfers, CPLs and public disclosure requests and citations. Mike Pageant and Elena McKee are our code enforcement officers and they stay busy with a variety of code violations, parking and abandoned vehicles. So this is a summary of our civil abatement process, uh, which code enforcement follows. With complaints, they start with a voluntary compliance and they work super hard to, to try to get voluntary compliance from people because we don't want to jump just straight into going in and abating someone's properties. So we, we work with them as much as we can to get voluntary compliance. If the voluntary compliance doesn't work, um, we have, we basically get a search warrant to go in and clean up their property for them. And if we have to do that, the property owner is responsible for all the cost. But again, we try super hard for voluntary compliance and try to work with people. Currently, right now, we have one that's been signed by a judge and the property owners all of a sudden doing a ton of work to, to make things right. So we're giving them that opportunity to do it instead of just rushing right in. Community outreach, uh, officers continue to use our community, utilize our community outreach program and supplies. We have also continued our partnership with Lindwood Police Department and the embedded social worker program. And here's a, a list of some of our community outreach efforts, which include things like cops and clergy, embedded social worker program and national night out. Cops and, uh, to continue with cops and clergy, it's been a huge success for us. The purpose of the program is to break down barriers that hinder communication between law enforcement and the community at large and promote collaboration in solving community problems, which brings us to our next slide coming up. So during one of our cops and clergy meetings, um, one of our faith based leaders from the Seattle Meditation Center mentioned how they know that there's others in their community did not know when it was appropriate to call nine one one. They'd actually had a burglary and they were afraid to call nine one one. They didn't, they didn't know what to do. And they brought this up during one of these meetings and it was great. So we got, we got to sit around and talk about it and it sparked a conversation, uh, that we needed to help educate all community members on how and when to call nine one one. So Sergeant Porter worked with two community, two members of the DEIC, the Department of Emergency Management and Ricky, the city's, uh, communication manager and developing a nine one one brochure. The brochure is being produced in English and Spanish. Uh, single page flyers are being produced in 11 of the most commonly spoken languages in the city and the QR code takes users to the city's website. There, and on the website, they could choose any language they want to see it in. So if it's not one of the 11 most commonly used, they still have access to it and they can see how to call nine one one. So as mentioned earlier, we have continued our partnership, uh, with Lindwood Police Department with the embedded social worker program. And Officer O'Hagan was selected as the community outreach officer to work with our embedded social worker, Heather Turner.
Okay, so the, the next series of slides are in reference to, uh, critical activity, which covers, um, use of force, vehicle pursuits, bias-based policing and complaints. Uh, in 2022, there were 26 force incidents with a total of 46 individual officer applications of force. This is representative of our, uh, team approach to situations that represented an increased likelihood of having to use force. Uh, this practice increases the chances of a favorable outcome, um, essentially minimizing risk of injury to officers and individuals, uh, involved. Of the 46 force applications, 34 of them were, uh, the use of strength to overcome resistance, um, which resulted in, uh, no injuries. The majority of individuals involved in the force application incidents were young adult males. 24 of the 26 involved individuals were either under the influence of, uh, alcohol or narcotics or both, um, and suffering from a behavioral health episode or a combination of both. All force applications undergo an extensive review process. All incidents were determined to be consistent with state law and department policy. Briefly covering vehicle pursuits. In 2021, the state passed legislation limiting police use of vehicle pursuits to apprehend criminal suspects. Our approach to vehicle pursuits is already very conservative, um, in nature. However, the policy was quickly updated to incorporate the changes and training was created and pushed out to commissioned staff. During 2022, uh, patrol engaged in two vehicle pursuits, both of which were, uh, terminated within a few minutes after they began by the officers that were involved or the supervisor that was on duty. Uh, as with forced incidents, vehicle pursuits are subject to, uh, command review. Uh, both pursuits were consistent with policy and state law. Uh, in 2022, uh, we received five complaints that were investigated by command. Uh, none of the complaints involve bias or accusations of bias. Overall, our feedback received from the community, community has been very positive in regards to the job that we're doing. As Commander King mentioned, we get daily feedback from the community through, uh, the spider tech platform, which has been huge for us. Helps us identify concerns or issues or maybe requests that, um, we wouldn't otherwise get from the community and, and allows us oftentimes the ability to circle back and, and, uh, maybe fix something that, uh, we could have done better or at least have, um, a better outcome. Bias-based policing, we continue to be aware of the potential for bias in police work and monitor personnel on a continuing basis to ensure it does not occur. Policy strictly prohibits bias and all personnel receive training at least once annually. This is our, uh, slide that depicts our community demographics. And these last set of slides or the last slide, the last graphs, um, are arrests and traffic infractions broken down by race, which are comparable to our overall community demographics.
All right, so this last slide is actually going to be a video. Uh, it's a short video of our drone program. In the video, you'll see footage from one of our drone pilots assisting SWAT with a warrant service. In the video, try to pay attention to, uh, they, with the drone, they utilize time, distance and shielding principles, making these operations much, much safer, both for officers and the There is sound, but it's elevator music and it's not showing up. And what you're seeing is, uh, video from one of our drones. And these are some of our technology upgrades that we talked about, some of the updating And the drone will take off here in a second, but as the drone's going, you can see how the SWAT operators are utilizing time, distance and shielding by staying away from the home as the drones work in its way, uh, up to the home. And once inside, the drone is able to clear the whole house in a much quicker time than a, a SWAT element would. Cause obviously the SWAT officers have to be, uh, kind of cognizant of people being in there and, and getting hurt or, or having someone encounter them, but the drone could go much quicker and clear the, the areas.
This house was not in Mol Lake Terrace, so.
I was gonna say, I don't know. But the door was open when you got there?
So, so the door was, had to be open, um, from somebody going up and opening it. So a SWAT operator did have to move, move up with behind a shield and open the door and then they backed out. Yeah, after making announcements, they, they went up and made announcements and, and did what they should do and then hit the door open. So, yep. And that's the end of our presentation. Any questions?
If you have any questions, should you have them?
Do we have any questions? Cause I remember somewhere always. So we gave budget for cameras, so I'm just wondering when you'll receive the cameras?
We're probably, uh, gonna come up with a policy. Uh, it's, it's also a negotiable item with the, uh, collective bargaining in it. It's a subject of mandatory bargaining in terms of how we utilize those, uh, body cameras. We, we're looking at two vendors, uh, leaning towards, uh, one vendor particularly well because we've had some reports from local agencies that troll the other vendor that didn't turn out so well. So right now we're looking at policy, having it looked at by our legal team and then, uh, talking to our collective bargaining units about the implementation of the policy. Uh, hopefully within the next few months, we'll be making some significant progress.
Can I, um, that incident you were talking about was either the end of 1997 or 1998 when that body was found in the trailer? Cause I was on the, um, police, um, board at the time and we were going door to door. And that I still have that memory in my head about going door to door, thinking, why are we going door to door? But it was very eye-opening of all the different things that go on in the city. But what I was wondering, the, the person who shot, um, the victim has been in jail now for 20 years and you found out that he could do another, I didn't, wasn't sure. Why did he have to do another five years or?
There's actually two suspects. Um, one is in, in prison in California. He'll, uh, he won't get out. This fellow was, the lesser included the two. And he had, uh, he was doing concurrent time between California and Washington, which means you're doing both sentences at the same time rather than consecutively. But when he's coming back here is the firearm enhancement for the crime, which he can't, you can't do firearm enhancements concurrently, you can only do them consecutively. So he's coming back here to serve his last five years of Washington. They've both been incarcerated in California for, since 1997 or 98.
And can, I just have a couple of just minor questions. They're more curiosity. So, um, I know there was an Everett incident where the 42-year-old just passed away because, um, they were shooting, um, somebody shot a gun and went in his apartment. And so it just happens that I know somebody who knew that person and just went to his funeral and we got to talking about how big the gun was and different things. So in your, um, pictures there, what kind of gun did that damage? So it went through the window, it went through a wall and it looked like it opened up and then it went through another wall? then it went through another wall?
It was, that was a pistol.
It was a, oh, you showed us a picture of the pistol.
I believe it was a nine-millimeter.
Yeah.
Because it was kind of interesting, you kind of try and see the damage it does, and you just don't realize it until you actually see the pictures. And then on page fifty-three, I'm just curious, you talked about when you look at mental health, and what does it mean, I think it was fifty, yeah, sorry, fifty-three? I was just curious, when you find somebody that is in mental health distress, you, you break it down into mental capacity, either none is apparent, I don't know what BHC stands for, and impaired mental, and then there's drug and alcohol. So when you arrest somebody, you really try and break down what they're on, or what the issue is?
BHC stands for behavioral health crises, generally someone that's emotionally upset to the point of not being in control.
So that would be the shooter that had the gun who shot through the wall would probably be a PHC?
And, and there was also some narcotics use there.
Oh, okay. And are these given to anybody? Is there a big pool of data, you know, not knowing where you put this data? Are we looking at the types of mental health categories and looking at, I don't know, with the money coming in from the pharmacy? I'm just wondering, are you looking more at, you know, looking at drug and alcohol, treatment centers, or are we looking at more mental impairments? Because it's always the question of what comes first, the mental health, or the drugs, or, and you just never quite know if the person is acting out because of the drug, or if they're acting out because they had pre-existing mental illness. So I guess it's a question I've always been curious about, that I don't think we'll ever know, but does the data go any farther than this?
Waspeak Association, sheriffs and police chiefs does a good job of compiling that data, and we have some fairly successful lobbying going on in Olympia regarding that. The treatment aspect is really more the responsibility of the state or the county than it is the cities. So we've, I've talked to the Assistant City Manager about several suggestions for use of that money. I guess it all depends on what that final amount is, and how we can do with it. But certainly, in my mind, the kind of issue that that money should be used to address is mental health and narcotics, absolutely, because the two seem to go hand-in-hand.
I guess I'm, yeah, it's hard to ask the question you want to, because it's like, is it getting any better? Is there anything helping? Yeah, and everything I see, I want to shake my head no to, but you guys experienced it firsthand, and...
Well, the Blake decision has been an absolute disaster. You know, I'm not blaming the courts for the decision to make, but when you, when you take away a system to hold people accountable and don't replace with something else, it's just like raising children, you have to have a carrot and a stick sometimes. Right now, there's, there's all carrot and no stick, so here we are, placed with people walking down the street openly using narcotics with no, no consequences. I don't think anybody can agree that's a good answer, but I don't have a better one right now.
And we talked briefly about the, the new law, the bill, the House bill that will pass, so if somebody's like caught in a park with narcotics on them, they'll be given maybe a pamphlet on where to go get treatment. And to me, it's encouraging almost drug sales, because now you know that you'll only get a misdemeanor, or you'll only get information on where to go get treatment. And I just, I don't understand the logic behind that, but maybe someday you could, like me, because I just...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure using the term "logic" really fits into that equation, doesn't it? The sale of narcotics is still a felony, but the possession is, is at best unless it's enough to package separately, to illustrate that you're, you're marketing it. It's a problem. A right, moving in the right direction will be, at least make it a misdemeanor. I think they kind of got it backwards by saying, well, you're going to be given three warnings. Maybe the better approach is, is to say, well, we're, we're going to penalize you for this, but if you go to treatment, that, that penalty can be abated somewhat. I think that's a better model, and I think that's what the legislature's been working on a bit lately.
But they've been kind of also, the opposite side's saying, it sounds like an easy out when they go to treatment, because they don't really have to go to treatment. So, I mean, the intention sounds really good, and I appreciate the thought behind it, but actually working and then for you to do your job, I think it makes it harder, so...
Absolutely. You want any, you want any argument from me on that point?
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all three of you for being here tonight, and for the report, and all the good work. Lots of good stuff this year, so thank you. I'll start with saying thank you to Sergeant Moss, who isn't here tonight, but who I saw doing some great community policing last weekend, handing out stickers at a park before he got called away, including to my kiddos. So thank you for all of the things, I think, both that make the reports and our weekly city manager updates, and I think all of the things that often don't as well. So, thank you. The DEIC was very appreciative, you know, for your work with them. In the creation of that flyer, I think again, and just thinking about inclusivity and ways to, to reach our community, I just, I would applaud your continued efforts to think, you know, about, I loved, I love your, your goal around being regional leaders and setting the example for modern policing as it relates to community expectations. I think you do a really good job of that, and I think that is one of the reasons that we continually hear really good feedback from our community by and large. And to your stats, we don't, we don't, we don't often hear grumblings, which is impressive, because recognize that oftentimes you are in challenging situations where people are not necessarily happy to have you there. So, what else? I did have, also, I guess one of the questions I wanted to ask you, and I think I asked you a similar question last time when we talked about ghost guns and kind of the increase there, I guess, looking at, I mean, four hundred and twenty-five domestic violence calls and increased property crime, are there things that we should be thinking about as a city to, I guess, support prevention in those two areas specifically, given, given some of those numbers?
Well, education is always good. I think we as a profession could do a lot better job of, of just engaging with people and getting ahead of the curve, instead of seeing the same cycle repeat itself time and time and time again. You know, getting out of the community is the answer. Danielle does a very good job, but she's one person. So each one of us needs to be an ambassador for that, and really encourage the victims in domestic violence crime to, to seek some help, maybe beyond what we can do for him, him or her. But that's always been an emphasis in this department, having a full-time domestic violence coordinator. Not every department has that. They should. They should have two or three. But budgetary restraints being what they are, that's difficult. But she's, she's a really hard-working person. I really appreciate her efforts in that regard.
No, and I appreciate that. I mean, that is something that we have prioritized in our budget. And I guess with that, you talked about the embedded social worker program, and that you would support an expansion, and that we've seen a lot of positive from the investment in that program. Can you talk a little bit about, if we were to expand that program, some of the things that that might allow us to do as a community?
Well, the program we have now is a really good deal. It's free, which is the best price you can possibly have, but that money's going to run out eventually. Linwood has been gracious enough to give us one day a week. We use her more than that, because she's obviously there all the time. We call her over. She rides with a specific officer in Linwood. But if we were to enlarge a program and have our own social worker, or at least if not a full-time person, at least a three-quarter time, I think a lot of the outreach that you and I just talked about would be more possible, particularly if you have the right social worker. The one we have now is absolutely the right social worker. I would like to clone her and have two of those, but you can't do that. So that would be the kind of outreach I'd be looking at, in addition to Danielle. And then pick the right officer to work with, he or she, whoever that may be. And the one we have now, Kylo Hagan, is a very person person. He's very good with people. I think that teamwork really is important. And also, having an officer walk around and engage people with a social worker really puts things in a different capacity. It's not just another cop that comes up and talks to you about something that's largely negative. It's a positive takeaway. It's, it's been a great program. I'll be honest with you, when we first started talking about it, I was kind of like, what? You know, how's that going to work? But this particular iteration has worked very well. I was never a big proponent for sending social workers by themselves into potentially dangerous situations, as some people have suggested. I think that's, that's just begging for a really tragic outcome, but the model we've adopted here has worked really well, and I would like to continue and expand upon it. I think that's a great use of opioid money, as, as we decide how much we have and how long it'll last, because this, this free program will not last forever.
Thank you. No, it's a great, great suggestion, and I think you touch on the importance of the right people in the right roles, and I will just commend you. I would be remiss if I didn't mention recruiting, because I think I talk about it every time you're here, but I do appreciate the intentionality about continuing to think about, as we recruit, you know, trying to ensure that we have folks on our, our police force that reflect, you know, our, the growing diversity that we see around our community, while still maintaining your really high standards, and I appreciate that you named that. I think that's most of it. I've made a lot of really scribbly notes tonight, but, oh, I did the shop with a cop in Muckel T.O. Can you talk about that? And is that something we're thinking about for Mount Lake Terrace? Or I guess, could you just tell us a little bit more about that work? I think it was on the slide with Danielle, some of the work that she's doing, that there's a shop with a cop.
We've, every year, we participate in some level. I don't think we had a high degree of participation this year. We've partnered with Linwood, Edmunds, Muckel T.O. from time to time. We're committed to doing that every year. It's fun. I mean, you get to walk around and buy stuff with other, other people's money and make kids happy. What's the downside? So we'll continue to be committed to it. This last year, our participation was not as grand as I would have liked it. It's largely a volunteer thing, and unless you get the right volunteers, that's not the kind of task I want to make people do. I want them to want to do it, and we'll just encourage that and continue it.
Who, I guess, where does that program originate out of? Who, do we know?
I don't know. It's been around for a good number of years. Generally speaking, we use the Target stores. They seem to be, as a corporate entity, seem to be very committed to that, and they have lots of toys there, so it works well.
It is. I try to, I try to avoid there when, when at all possible, so...
I've participated myself a number of times, and at the end of it, you always end up chipping in some of your own money, because you hate to cut the kids off and say, you know, I've got thirty bucks, and it's, it's forty bucks. It's like, you know, I'd be glad to spend my own money for that, and I think most officers will.
It sounds like a great program. I guess I would just say, I would love to know more, and if there's ways that we could help support that particularly, it's supportive of some of our Mount Lake Terrace kids, I think that would be a worthwhile conversation to have, so...
We'll make sure to invite you next time.
All right, sounds great. Thank you.
All right, so we have Councilmember Payne Donovan with his hand up.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, Chief and commanders. Really appreciate the presentation and appreciated the sneak peek I got on, on this last Friday. Chief Khan, I had a chance to sit down and talk through some of this, so really appreciate the level of transparency and sort of narrative you can provide us and, and community. But had, had a couple of quick questions left over, since Councilmember Murray stole most of, of my thoughts and questions, but just, I think Commander King, and running through the, by the numbers slides here, you know, just made me, or, you know, it's helpful to, to see, you know, these trends over the three years, but given that we've, you know, that we're coming out of a pandemic, you know, I think having a slightly longer sort of snapshot of these numbers year-on-year would, would be helpful, so don't know that need to, or if it's easy to, to generate something like that or not, or if, you know, whether it's, you know, traffic stops, or catalytic converter thefts, or DV crimes, wondering if there's any takeaways sort of over the past, say, you know, five years or the last decade, that, that you think would be helpful for us? If, if not, no worries, but was wondering about that. And then, then also, I think, you know, we've talked a little bit about the sort of, you know, bias and, and sort of the tension you, you give to sort of, you know, the critical activity slides, as well as the bias-based policing numbers, and I think that bears out well, but I'd also, you know, encourage you, if, if in the future there, there are examples, or, or more narrative around, you know, you know, how, how that shows up in, in your training, you know, like, like Councilmember Murray mentioned, it's, it's great that in recruitment and hiring, you're, you're paying attention, or you're, you're thinking about, you know, recruiting candidates that represent community. But I think as, as, you know, our, our nation and, and, you know, our neighbors, you know, engage, you know, in conversations about policing, it's helpful to under, to get a little bit more texture there, and I think you've done a, a good job of it, but if, and especially around this bias, these bias-based policing slides, if there's anything more that, that you think would be helpful for us to know, I'd encourage you to share it. But otherwise, I just want to chime in with my support for, for the concept of a social worker and, and that sort of embedded approach. I think, you know, makes good, good sense, and I'd be supportive of, you know, whether it's our opioid dollars or some other continuing, you know, sort of funding for, for a certain, you know, appropriate level of, of social work, social worker. I think that's, that's terrific, and I'll leave it there, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did I miss you? Mayor Fatim?
Just trying to be patient. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and first of all, thank you. Thank you for your service and your leadership, and all of the success and support, you know, as, as we've heard and has been pointed out, I mean, we don't hear the same problems about our policing and whatnot that, that we hear about around the country and from other areas. And the reason is because of the high standards, and the training, and the leadership that you guys provide. And I, I think that's, that's, you know, that's built trust and respect, and as you are building that trust and respecting our citizens and our community, that has in turn built trust and respect for, for our community, for our policing in the community. So I appreciate everything you've done to make that happen. Please be sure to pass that along to our, all of our officers, and let them, make sure they know how much we respect and appreciate the role that they play in creating a safe community here in Mount Lake Terrace. So the other thing I want to really applaud you guys for is the incorporating education and long-term strategies into enforcement. I think that is really critical, as we're, you know, it's not just about slapping somebody's wrist. It's about slapping somebody's wrist and then helping them see how to build a better future for themselves and for the community as a whole. So I, again, applaud you guys for what, what we're doing and how we're incorporating that into our, our law enforcement strategies. Want to echo comments about our community-oriented policing strategies and the embedded social worker. I, I think that is really critical, especially as we continue to see more and more challenges that are, all of us are facing regarding homelessness, mental health challenges, behavioral health, just drug use, et cetera, all those different problems that are creating difficulties in our society. That is such an important role that we can provide in helping people find solutions. So, so I look forward to hearing more about, one, in, in future presentations and, or opportunities to have you guys come share a little bit more about the embedded social worker program, how, what our successes are, because we know there are successes, but we aren't, I don't think we're spending enough time talking about how important those successes are, and what kind of role it plays in improving our communities. So I think spending some time talking about that, which helps build the case for needing to expand that program and fund it. And so that's, looking forward to hearing more about what kind of funds we need to budget for going into the future, because I think we all agree that it's an important program, and want to see it, ensure it's success, continued success in our community. So look forward to that. Also look forward to having, hearing more about cops and clergy, the program and successes there, as, you know, in our, our city goals and vision for our community. You know, we talk about the role that cops and clergy and, and our community ambassadors or whatnot can play in helping create a safe community, as well as an informed and engaged community. I think there's a lot of opportunities there, a lot of opportunities to build that program and make it really successful, and being able to create more, better, and more and better outreach in, in informing our community and the citizens, especially those that are more vulnerable and less engaged, and, or have the less ability to be in... or have the less ability to be engaged in the big picture and they're, you know, living their individual troubled lives and, and opportunities to be able to communicate and let them know about how we can play a role in helping them in, you know, find resources that they need, uh, to improve their livelihoods. Um, so again, two areas I'd love to spend a little more time talking about and, and looking at how we can better utilize those programs and, and creating more success there. Then moving on to code enforcement, um, appreciate everything that we've been doing. I think there's still a lot more we can be doing, especially utilizing the property abatement program and, you know, uh, looking at those nuisance conditions. And now that we've put this program, new process in place, uh, we used it once last year. I think there's, there were a list, at one time we had heard about a top 10 list. Um, so, uh, starting to see some more progress on tapping into those, uh, the, the, the process we now have in place and being able to utilize that process to abate those, uh, those nuisance properties. Uh, and then the other thing is, is getting back to kind of the voluntary compliance. Um, and we talked about this previously, but really getting a better understanding of how many of those properties, uh, that are violating our codes are, the, the reason that they're violating the code is because they're elderly or incapacitated in some way or incapable of taking care of their own property and trying to, now that we have our, our events coordinator slash volunteer coordinator on board, and I know that you had just talked about how he's going to be incorporating, spending a lot of time building volunteer programs to be able to put volunteers into places that are needed. I think this is one of the places that maybe we can create a program, uh, and tap into the, our, our resources of, of volunteers and people that in our community that are willing to step in and help out and be able to help once, you know, if we know which properties are, uh, you know, that we have that are facing challenges because of incapable, they're incapable of taking care of their own property, yet would be willing to take the assistance of others to, to correct that wrong, I guess, if you will, then let's, let's start looking at how we can do that, uh, and, and really start improving the, the, how our community looks and feels. Um, so anyways, some things I'm looking forward to hearing more about. So the three areas I'd love to spend a little more time on is the code enforcement, uh, embedded social worker and the cops and clergy program. But appreciate everything you guys are doing. Again, thank you.
Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I always want to begin with just thank you. I mean, the work that you're all doing is absolutely necessary. Uh, you do it with great care and great consideration and deeply appreciate that. And begin with the leadership. So I just want to make sure I acknowledge the leadership, but it clearly shows through the ranks as well. Uh, I was looking at slide 52. I should put my glasses on, but just kind of recognizing those 46 uses of force. I think that makes out about once every eight days, uh, which really kind of reminds people, you really are truly putting your, um, livelihood on the line every day. And I think you know that as professionals, but just for residents to kind of remind them that. Once a week, can you imagine once a week, you're going to use physical force in your job, period? I don't, I don't think most of us would want to wake up every day and go do that. And I appreciate that work. A handful of questions, more comments along the way. Uh, I have no choice but to go back to slide 38, which was the 16 firearms recovered from someone who had just gotten their permission back to use a firearm. There's a disconnect there. I just want to recognize there's probably an ongoing investigation, but I suspect in the, not the ring the alarm bell here, I'm hoping, is all of those were secured legally? I mean, when I look at some of those guns, I go, who is selling this stuff? But I know that that's a whole other, don't roast me on the internet and come after my family. But just recognizing, come on, at some point we got to go, what's going on here? Uh, and that could be your neighbor, for the record, right? I don't, four square miles, that could be anybody's neighbor at this point. But just keeping that in motion as well, that most of those were secured, if not all of those legally? Is that part of the ongoing investigation?
It's ongoing. Yeah. They weren't secured very well. And, uh, and they were all acquired legally, last I had heard.
Yeah. So all legal, but all just out in the open like that?
You know, we have no control over when somebody gets their gun rights back. But we, we were able to, uh, obviously get them taken away for a while.
Perfect. Yeah. And again, not trying to ring any alarms, but just when you think about all the pain points out there and you realize somebody in a haze, I'm going to presume accidentally discharged a firearm. And thank goodness the next door neighbor didn't pay the price, as we just heard someone share a 20-year example ago, but I know that happens more frequently than we care to talk about. I wanted to do a quick follow-up, mostly because I have been offline, so I had about 80 messages that I opened up to. Uh, and in that, in there, it was only a week off, but nonetheless, in that week, I saw that we had a trespassing, um, ordinance violation. And I know that that's new and that's still actually under review, but I was hoping maybe you could just speak a little bit to, not necessarily the specificity of that case, but are we seeing that that's necessarily being implemented more often than this one time? My take on it is this is the first time.
This is the first time. And obviously the first offense was a seven-day issue. We've, uh, implemented that with no problem. Um, hopefully, uh, getting someone's attention, maybe we'll correct the problem. But, uh, the ordinance was very easy to work through. It was well-written, well-executed, and it, it went very smoothly.
Excellent. That's wonderful to hear. And encouraging the DEIC to still have that solid lens on, um, the policy or ordinance. I always get this confused, but you're very good. Not a law, it's an ordinance. But nonetheless, uh, good to hear that we're working through it. It's working the way we had hoped and staff I'm trusting, uh, feel supported in that process. Uh, the last two are really just to echo, and, and Mayor Protam hit upon it. I wanted to bring a different angle on recognizing that we have an event planner, but I would hope that you all are thinking about, uh, that service, uh, expansion. And in particular, I know we have, I think it's this month, uh, the take-back, uh, prescription pills. I don't know if we're participating in that this year or not, but to me, that would be a wonderful example of using the event planner, bringing the community together and getting a dangerous, you know, sleeping, not even a sleeper, it's a well-known killer, uh, prescription drug use out there, uh, just in people's homes. But to make that National Day part of Mount Lake Terrace's history again would be great. I think we used to do that, but, um, it'd be great if we could maybe now get the event planner part of that and be one less thing you all have to do, but be a part of. Uh, and then the last one is I just wanted to echo, um, what I was hearing the other council say as well, which is, I know I would welcome hearing how we can help you get more than one day a week. Free is excellent, but I also think sometimes paying for what you get isn't a bad thing. And we want to get something really good out of this. And the success that we're seeing, uh, this to me would be a, a good use of that opioid money. But if there's other pockets of money or bigger pockets, uh, I would, as a council member, be open to hearing that. I've seen and heard from the other cities how well it's working there and, and anecdotally know it's working well here. And then you all give us evidence, uh, quarterly. So I appreciate that as well.
Okay. Do I see anyone else? All right. Um, I saw one little thing in there, but I'm not going to, um, you guys have the fingerprinting, the new machine, I noticed. Uh-huh. So, um, is, is that compatible with the real estate industry's need, need for it being fingerprinted?
We have the, uh, the field units where we can instantly identify a person that's, it won't surprise anybody to learn, sometimes people don't tell us the truth about who they are. And, uh, this is a pretty fail-safe way to find it out. And we'll have the unit in the, uh, in the, uh, police building, uh, as soon as they run all the appropriate lines.
Okay. Well, I'll talk more about that later. Um, so I don't have anything else. I don't see anyone else's hands going up. Thank you very much. I know, I know it's getting late, so you want to get home. Thank you very much. All right. So next on our agenda is the review of Amendment Three to Professional Services Agreement for the Interim Public Works Director. That will be Stefan, right?
Uh, yes. Good evening. Uh, following the departure of the city's previous full-time public works director, um, I reached out and contacted Phil Williams, who had recently concluded a, an interim public works position at the city of Redmond. I asked him if he had a little more in him and, uh, willing to spend his time at the city of Mount Lake Terrace. He said yes. So using the authority granted to me by the city council, I entered into a professional services agreement with Mr. Williams last fall. Um, as my authority only is good up to $40,000, I brought Amendments One and Two for the city council last October and this past February. The council approved both of those. I recently spoke with some public works staff who asked me if, uh, Phil could stay on a little while longer until we get a new public works director because he's still desperately needed. Um, so I went and talked with Phil and he said, uh, yes, but, um, it would not be at, uh, on a full-time basis. It would be more like just three days a week to at least get him through the end of May. And hopefully we'll have a permanent public works director on board by then. But it, it will at least provide staff with a resource and someone that they will be able to check in with. And I think everyone here can attest to how effective he has been since he's been here. Um, he's hired a new city engineer, two engineers in, uh, the engineering division and works effectively with operations and with, um, uh, his engineering staff and has been a great resource for executive leadership team and other staff in City Hall and during the budget process particularly. So, um, you have another amendment before you tonight, Amendment Number Three in the amount of $25,000. So if the council is, uh, willing to support that, um, you can approve it and place it on the consent agenda for next week, the 17th.
All right. Do we have any, any, yeah, because we all want him.
Thank you.
Do I see anything up there? Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
I do. I, I could definitely get behind this concept, uh, only with one, uh, condition as for, uh, Phil himself, which is no cowboy exits like our, uh, former city manager did where you just don't show up and you're just gone. That's not how you do this. So if we approve this, that means that when your contract ends, you'll come sit in this chair so we can actually applaud you and thank you the way we should, uh, which, that is still going out to you too, Andrew. I think you're probably still watching. Uh, it's no, still a chance to come back and have that happen. But yeah. Uh, and also just another chance just to say thank you, Stefan. I mean, when I look back over the past year, I, and knowing the work that you did and then the team that you put around you, uh, just absolutely amazing. And they continue to pay this city off in dividends. And it's going to be one of those things that when we look back in the 10 years, no one's going to remember it. But I promise you, I'm going to do my best to, because it's just been absolutely fabulous to folks that you have introduced us to who have treated this city extremely well. So thank you.
All right. Okay. So this will be on the consent calendar. This will be on the consent calendar. All right. Oh, we, we're all for it. Thank you. All right. Next is public comment.
There's no one signed up in the audience. There's no audience for public comment. So online, however, um, if anyone online would like to make a comment, please use the hand raise tool. Going once, going twice. That concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you. So, uh, we have, uh, a review of the, um, meeting agenda for Monday night, April 17th. And, um, we've all looked at it. So is, does anyone have anything to add or, okay, we'll move on to the next council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Well, I, I have, um, one. Um, I don't know if you know it, but, but, um, Jerry Smith's plaque is now out there. And, um, it was a nice sunny day and I forgot to take a photo. Um, but we'll, we'll get another, we'll get a photo. We'll get lots of photos of it. But it is out there and it's, um, out there for everyone to see and it's just beautiful. And, um, his, um, widow has already been there, seen it, approved of it. Um, so, let's see. Um, I had, um, this is, this is something I'll call you about tomorrow, um, the, our 1406 money. I'll probably, um, want to talk to you about it too. Cause I don't know, have we used it? And if we haven't, where is it? Cause i- is it under the housing needs fund? You don't have to answer tonight. I just, uh, will talk to the two of you about it. Um, and then, uh, we need to schedule for a retreat. So as soon as I, we get our city manager, he's going to be so overwhelmed. But we do need to get a retreat going. We do need to talk about a lot of things. Um, and, um, and so on and so forth. So. Go ahead, Councilmember Murray and then Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And maybe, I was going to say this is premature and maybe we'll talk about it on Monday. But is, I guess, is there a plan in place for kind of us as council connecting with our, our new city manager as he is going through his onboarding process? Or is that something that we need to have conversations about with him next week when he's here?
Uh, yes. I've talked with the executive leadership team and we've already set up meetings with the, uh, new city manager and with, um, all the executive leadership team members individually. And then we've also asked to start setting up meetings with council members individually as well. Um, it's one thing to sit with you all here during a meeting, but you don't have the kinds of conversations you would one-on-one. So yes, those meetings are being scheduled.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to see if it was going to come up. Maybe this is premature as well, but I wanted to say congratulations both to the city staff as well as to the city council, our mayor, Mayor Protam in particular, Susan, excuse me, Representative Susan Delbinay, uh, kept our Main Street alive is what I will say. And just wanted to definitely thank her and her team, uh, for their visit and for listening to our needs and then recognizing that we should prioritize those needs, at least at this portion of the process. So just thank you for keeping Main Street, uh, Main Street alive, but recognizing all the work that went into making that hopefully an easy decision for them. Thank you for that.
And I got to thank her personally for that yesterday. Oh, anyone else? Uh, I always, I have to, all right. There's nothing up there. Okay. So if, if there isn't anything else, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.